Hello, this is Pastor Dale Capron at Lacy Spring United Methodist Church. I'm glad you're joining us for our weekly Bible study. We're looking at God's revelation and how God reveals Himself, looking through various scriptures. We're gonna look at verses in the Old Testament and the New Testament. I jump around a good bit, so just to warn you, whatever version of the Bible you're using is perfectly fine by me. If you want to have a print Bible or you know, pull up a Bible program on your phone or on your computer, whatever you prefer is totally fine. But we do jump from Old Testament to New Testament a good bit. We look at various verses that give us keys to understanding God's revelation. That's our purpose in this Bible study tonight, Wednesday night, August 5th. And I'm glad that you're joining us either live or watching the video later or whatever you prefer. Let's begin tonight's Bible study with prayer. Holy God, teach us once again of the holiness of Your Word. Teach us to appreciate it. Teach us to guard it and keep it safe. Teach us its meaning and the depths of interpretation that are in there. Help us tonight especially to see the truth that is in Your revealed Word and assist us in a deeper understanding of Your purpose. By Your holy name we pray these things, amen. So we've covered the fact that God reveals Himself and chooses what is revealed to us. We've covered general revelation, which is the way that God reveals Himself to all people and all creation, the way He has revealed to all the life that He's given the earth. And tonight, we're gonna look at a special revelation in the history of Israel. How is God specially revealed specifically to Israel? So as you can probably guess, we'll look at a good number of Old Testament scriptures because we want to get that history before we get to the New Testament, God's relationship with the people of Israel prior to the coming of Jesus. But we will also look at some New Testament verses as well. So the first thing that God has revealed specifically in the history of Israel is that Israel is to be a people set apart, a holy land, and they have a salvation history. So they're a people set apart, number one. Number two, they have a holy land, a holy place, a specific territory that God has given them. And number three, they're part of salvation history, the history that's specifically about the salvation of mankind, all humankind. So our first verse looking at this is Exodus, chapter 19, verse 6. Exodus 19:6. And I preached from Exodus last Sunday, so my marker's already in the book Exodus. Exodus, the second book of the Bible, chapter 19, verse 6. "And you shall be to Me a kingdom of priests and a holy nation." These are the words that you shall speak to the people of Israel. So God has given this word to Moses. Moses is then to give those words to the people of Israel. And that the word that God gives Moses is that there will be a kingdom of priests and a holy nation. So if we're thinking about how is Israel special on the earth? What is different about Israel? We have this early indication, remember this is Exodus. So before Israel had kings, before Israel was really established and had a standing army and all those kinds of things, as a nation, God was declaring there would be a kingdom of priests and they would be a holy nation. That the entire country, the whole nation was expected to live by holy standards, to worship a holy God, to keep themselves pure and apart from other nations, and to not blemish themselves the way that the neighboring nations had done. The next verse we're gonna look at is in the book of Esther. Esther, chapter 3, verse 8. Esther's not a very large book, long, not a long book. Esther, chapter 3, and we're gonna look at the eighth verse. "Then Hamad said to King Asserus, 'There is a certain people scattered abroad and dispersed among the peoples in all the provinces of your kingdom. Their laws are different from those of every other people, and they do not keep the king's laws, so that it is not to the king's prophet to tolerate them.'" So this verse tells us that in the eyes of foreigners, the eyes of other nations, other people, you know, there's this strange people among us, right? There's this group of people that follows a different set of rules. This is exactly what God had told Moses back in Exodus 19, that they would be a holy nation, they would be different. They would be a different people, and they would be noticeable. Our third verse on this topic, we're gonna turn to the book of Psalms. Probably pretty easy to find, Psalms 122. It's nice and short, nine verses. So I'm gonna read the whole Psalm, Psalm 122. "I was glad when they said to me, 'Let us go to the house of the Lord.' Our feet had been standing within your gates, O Jerusalem, Jerusalem built as a city that is bound firmly together, to which the tribes go up, the tribes of the Lord, as was decreed for Israel, to give thanks to the name of the Lord. Their thrones for judgment were set, the thrones of the house of David. Pray for the peace of Jerusalem; may they be secure who love you. Peace be within your walls and security within your towers. For my brothers and companions' sake I will say, 'Peace be within you; for the sake of the house of the Lord, our God, I will seek your good.'" Psalm 122 indicates that Israel is to be one nation, one holy group of people. They have many tribes, and there's many different loyalties and different beliefs within those tribes, but they're unified in their worship of God. They're unified in the idea that they're set apart to be this holy nation with Jerusalem as their holy city. So this Psalm 122 specifically mentioning Jerusalem brings up the question of why is Jerusalem important? Why has God revealed that Jerusalem is to be the holy city? God chose Jerusalem, just like God chooses to reveal Himself. God chooses Jerusalem to be His holy city, set aside for worship. And we see this very clearly in the book of Deuteronomy. We'll turn back to Deuteronomy. Verses 1 through 14, this is a pretty lengthy section. But Deuteronomy 12 tells us specifically why God has picked Jerusalem. "These are the statutes and rules that you shall be careful to do in the land that the Lord, the God of your fathers, has given you to possess, all the days that you live on the earth. You shall surely destroy all the places where the nations whom you shall dispossess serve their gods, on the high mountains and on the hills and under every green tree. You shall tear down their altars and dash in pieces their pillars and burn their ashurem with fire. You shall chop down the carved images of their gods and destroy their name out of that place. You shall not worship the Lord your God in that way, but you shall seek the place that the Lord your God will choose out of all your tribes to put his name and make his habitation there. There you shall go, and there you shall bring your burnt offerings and sacrifices, your tithes and the contribution that you present, your vow offerings, your free-will offerings, and the firstborn of your herd and of your flock. And there you shall eat before the Lord your God, and you shall rejoice, you and your households, in all that you undertake in which the Lord your God has blessed you. You shall not do according to all that we are doing here today, everyone doing whatever is right in his own eyes; for you have not as yet come to the rest and to the inheritance that the Lord your God has given you. But when you go over the Jordan and live in the land that the Lord your God has given you to inherit, and when he gives you rest from all your enemies around, so that you live in safety, then to the place that the Lord your God will choose to make his name dwell there, there you shall bring all that I command you, your burnt offerings and your sacrifices, your tithes and the contribution that you present, and all your finest vow offerings that you vow to the Lord. And you shall rejoice before the Lord your God, you and your sons and your daughters, your male servants and your female servants, and the Levite that is within your towns, since he has no portion or inheritance with you. Take care that you do not offer your burnt offerings in any place that you see, but at the place that the Lord will choose in one of your tribes. There you shall offer your burnt offerings, and there you shall do all that I am commanding you." So these are very specific instructions. God even says what types of offering they are to bring to the holy city. He talks about them going up to this specific place after they've gotten the land. And in Deuteronomy, chapter 12, they haven't gotten the land yet. So first they have to go into the land and possess it and drive out the other tribes. And then, once that's accomplished, there will be one place in Israel, one place in the nation, where all the tribes, all the different people, will set aside their differences, come together, and make these types of offerings, as God has decreed their will. So God has chosen this, and of His own will, and this is what the people are to do, to follow God. If God has made known in history that this happens at specific times and places, so God not only reveals what He chooses to reveal of Himself, but He chooses to do so at specific times and places. That's important for us to understand that God has chosen certain people and chosen certain times and chosen certain locations for His revelation. And those people, and those times, and those locations are made holy by God's choice and by His revelation. We're gonna look at Deuteronomy, chapter 6. So we're still in Deuteronomy 12, let's go back to Deuteronomy, chapter 6. We're gonna look at verses 20 through 25. I'll give you just a second to turn there, Deuteronomy 6, 20 to 25. "When your son asks you in time to come, what is the meaning of the testimonies and the statutes and the rules that the Lord your God has commanded you? Then you shall say to your son, 'We were Pharaoh's slaves in Egypt, and the Lord brought us out of Egypt with a mighty hand; and the Lord showed signs and wonders, great and grievous, against Egypt and against Pharaoh and all his household before our eyes. And he brought us out from there, that he might bring us in and give us the land that he swore to give to our fathers. And the Lord commanded us to do all these statutes, to fear the Lord our God, for our good always, that he might preserve us alive as we are this day. And it will be righteousness for us, if we are careful to do all this commandment before the Lord our God, as he has commanded us.'" So this short little passage in Deuteronomy 6 reminds the people of Israel about their slavery in Egypt and where they have come from. And it also hints in the direction of the place where they're going. And essentially, they're being reminded that God has acted specifically calling Moses and sending him to Egypt at a time, going to that place. He's called other leaders in Israel at a specific time and place, and they will go into the promised land, they will go into their inheritance at a specific time that God has already chosen. And they will not go into the land before the time of the Lord, they will not go into the land after the time of the Lord, but they will go in at the specific time that God has this picked. And that's because God reveals the future to us, reveals what's going to happen as He chooses, of His will. And we are to receive what He's saying, believe it and trust in it, but not to know the future for ourselves, not by our own power or our own determination. So this passage is telling us, you know, what is the meaning of all the rules that God has commanded you? It's like, well, God has done mighty things for Israel before. He's going to do mighty things for us in the future, so we're gonna trust in the Lord and stick with His path and just go in His direction. We're going to turn all the way to the last book of the Bible now, the book of Revelation. Revelation mentions Jerusalem in a few spots, so we wanna see how the revelation, in the book of Revelation, the words in Revelation, what do they tell us about Jerusalem? And how does that compare to the old Jerusalem? So we're gonna look at Revelation, chapter 3, verse 12. And then immediately after, we're gonna flip over to Revelation 21, verse 10. So the first verse here is Revelation, chapter 3, verse 12. An early note, an early hint about the city of God, the new Jerusalem. And there's a bigger description of it at the end of the book, in chapter 21. Revelation 3, verse 12. "The one who conquers, I will make him a pillar in the temple of my God. Never shall he go out of it, and I will write on him the name of my God and the name of the city of my God, the new Jerusalem, which comes down from my God out of heaven in my own new name." So the one who endures, the one who conquers, is going to have the name of God written on him and the name of the holy city, the new Jerusalem. Revelation, chapter 21, verse 10. Revelation 21:10 says, "And he carried me away in the Spirit to a great high mountain, and showed me the holy city of Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven from God." So the new Jerusalem is descending from heaven. God is sending it, the one who controls heaven and controls earth, is sending the new Jerusalem, sending the new holy city down to earth. That's the vision given to John. So the old Jerusalem on the old earth has been destroyed effectively by the time of the book of Revelation, and the new Jerusalem is needed. It says, "new Jerusalem" every instance. This is the fulfillment of what Jerusalem was supposed to be. When we go back to Deuteronomy, and we read about what the holy city was intended to be, and we realize that the nation of Israel went astray, they wandered off, they were disobedient to God. The Son of God came, and they didn't recognize Him as a people. They led to His arrest and his crucifixion. So a new Jerusalem is necessary to fulfill what the original Jerusalem was supposed to be. This holy city, this holy place on earth. And make no mistake, the new Jerusalem is on the earth. It's sent from heaven. So where does it go? If it's not in heaven anymore, where is it going? Well, it must be going to earth, right? It must be coming down from the heavens. So the new Jerusalem takes the place of the old Jerusalem. The city of Jerusalem was ravaged by the Roman Empire, nearly destroyed, about 70 A.D. And if the author of Revelation was aware of that and knew of that, it must have seemed like, well, the old Jerusalem is gone. It's been wiped out, and we have a new Jerusalem coming. And you and I, in the place we live in history now, we know there's still a city of Jerusalem. It is still an important city in the world. It has a great population, a huge population. But we're still given this vision of a new Jerusalem coming that's going to be holy, it's gonna be set directly from heaven, so that the people of God, the people who are remaining true to God and worshiping Him, can go there, to same purpose as the old Jerusalem, to go up to a holy place, to go to a holy location. And Revelation indicates that the new Jerusalem is the location of the final events of the life of the Revealer. So the book of Revelation closes out our Bible. It concludes the New Testament. It concludes the revelation given in the early church period. And it gives us everything we need for salvation, the New Testament does. And the book of Revelation indicates that the sort of close of the story, the fulfillment, and the end of God's work includes this new Jerusalem, this new holy city. So in a very general sense, we refer to the Bible and sacred writings as revelation. We're saying that these writings, in a very, in a real way, these writings are about the special times and special places and special events when God revealed part of Himself, right? Like, there's very little in the holy writings that is not related to God revealing Himself. There's very little in there that is not in some way connected to God revealing Himself, calling a holy people, drawing them to a holy location for holy events, the specific events that led in salvation history, that are part of salvation history. God was specially revealed in one man who was born to one woman. So the birth of Christ, and His conception, His miraculous coming to earth is a special revelation of God in one man, who is Jesus, born to one woman who was Mary. And that is, that's the way God chose to reveal the Savior to all humanity, to involve one man, Jesus, and one man, one woman married, excuse me. One man, Jesus, one woman, Mary. And they represent both, male and female, men and women. And that's God's choosing, the way He chose to reveal Himself. Jesus could have come to earth in any way that God picked. He didn't have to come and be conceived by the Holy Spirit, as we say in the Apostles' Creed. He didn't have to come and be born from a woman. He didn't have to come and go through that infant stage and toddler stage and early growth stages. The Savior did not have to be born and raised in that way. That is the way God chose to send the Savior. God's will and God's choice are all over the description of the coming of the Savior into the world. Let's look at Matthew, chapter 1. We're gonna look at Luke, chapter 1 also. So two of our Gospels, Matthew, chapter 1. Matthew 1, verse 16. So Matthew, chapter 1, begins with the genealogy of Jesus Christ, which is setting Jesus, His family history, His worldly family line, right, His family tree, to show that this line of people was on earth and included people we recognized from Old Testament passages. And then we get to the birth of the Savior. He's in the line of a particular family of human beings. This is one of the indications that Jesus is completely human, that He's totally human, as He's born in this line of people. Matthew 1:16. "And Jacob, the father of Joseph, the husband of Mary, of whom Jesus was born, who is called Christ." So Joseph is kind of the adoptive father. He's the husband of Mary, but not the actual father of Jesus, as we know. But the family line, this family line in Matthew, goes through Joseph to show that Joseph was chosen by God to be Jesus' earthly death, to be His kind of surrogate father on earth. And that's a very important position. Now, if we turn over to Luke's Gospel, Luke has a different intro, a different beginning to the birth of the Savior and the events there. Different perspective. We have in Luke's Gospel, beginning at verse 5, an extended passage about John the Baptist and the foretelling of his birth and the foretelling of Jesus' birth. And Mary and Elizabeth, the two cousins, who were the mothers of John the Baptist and of Jesus, interacting with one another. We have Mary's Song of Praise, which is called the Magnificat, that begins at verse 46, Luke, chapter 1, verse 46. Then we have the birth of John the Baptist, and then we have Zechariah's prophecy. And then when we get to chapter 2, we have the birth of Jesus Christ. So I want us to read the actual verses here that describe His birth in Luke's Gospel, beginning at verse 4. This is Luke, chapter 2, verse 4. "And Joseph also went up from Galilee, from the town of Nazareth, to Judea, to the city of David, which is called Bethlehem, because he was of the house and lineage of David, to be registered with Mary, his betrothed, who was with child. And while they were there, the time came for her to give birth; but she gave birth to her firstborn son, wrapped him in swaddling cloths, and laid him in a manger, because there was no place for them in the inn." And we are very familiar with that account, that Christmas story that we share with one another every year. But it's also key to us to recognize that Joseph went up for a census because genetically speaking, or by his family tree, he was related. He was a descendant of David. So that family line, that family history, God chose when to send His Son as Jesus. He chose the time, He chose the people. He chose to honor a word He had given to David that his lineage would be great, His family line, His descendants would be great, and the king would come from him. So God picked this, and picked Joseph, and picked Mary, and chose this time and this location. Bethlehem, the city of David, right, in Judea. Joseph wasn't from Bethlehem. He was from the region of Galilee, the town of Nazareth. And Jesus is born specifically to Joseph and to Mary this time, this place, because God chose it. God chose to reveal His Son in this way. And God made a specific choice, we need to remember, that He would be revealed in one, who is Jesus, rather than universally in all. God God chose to reveal Himself to humanity as salvation through Jesus, rather than revealing Himself to all humankind all at once. And God has chosen that. God's will, His determination, has chosen that salvation would come by Jesus and not by all people. So we just looked at Luke two, verse four, which is a key verse of this, seeing that Jesus was born in Bethlehem, a specific time God chose. We can also go to the Book of Romans. The Book of Romans, chapter one. Romans one, verse three. And this repeats what we read in Luke two. "Concerning his son, who was descended from David according to the flesh." So descended from David according to his family line, according to his genetic family tree, but descended from God in a very special way as well. We can also look at Revelation, chapter 22. Last chapter of the Bible. Revelation 22, verse 16. "I, Jesus, have sent my angel to testify to you about these things for the churches. I am the root and the descendant of David, the bright morning star." So in the final chapter of God's revealed Word, in the Book of Revelation, Jesus has this final word, where He specifically says, not only is He the King, and not only is He the Son of God, "I am the root and I am the descendant of David." So this is how important salvation history is to God, that we are saved in history, we are saved in real time. Salvation is real and not only spiritual, and it's rooted in what we call reality. So that Jesus, at this point in Revelation, He is fully revealed as King. He is fully revealed as conqueror. He has already defeated Satan and all evil in the world. They're thrown into the lake of fire, they're gone. Jesus victorious, Jesus King, Jesus conqueror. Jesus, in all of His glory, still proclaims Himself a descendant of David. And we can stop and wonder about that, because it seems like David's just a man, right? He's the King of Israel, he's an important man, but still just a human being, and not more than a human being, just a man. But Jesus, in all of His glory, says, "I am a descendant of David." And proclaims Himself the bright morning star. Jesus fully reveals to us, Jesus in all of His glory and splendor, still pointing out in the last recorded word that we're given, if we're thinking chronologically through the Bible, the last word, "I am a descendant of David." So this seems important to Jesus. It seems important to God. Important is revealed Word, so it should be important to us as His followers. If God reveals Himself in history, and we looked at this, right? If Jesus is the descendant of David, if Matthew gives us this family line that comes down, if Jesus, if God reveals Himself in history, then the witnesses of this revealing must be given primary importance in assessing the revelation. So I'm gonna read that phrase again, it's a little wordy. "The witnesses of the revealing." And by witnesses, I mean the authors of the Scripture, who are gifted by God to write the Holy Words. We don't believe this is a process they did on their own, that independent human beings created the Bible. It's a process we believe God blesses by His Spirit and interacts with human beings, honoring them, honoring us, by giving us these holy words. "The witnesses of the revealing, the authors of the Scripture, must be given primary importance in assessing the revelation." That doesn't mean they're the only people that get to interpret the Word, the only people who are important in the conversation. But the authors, the witnesses of the revealing, have to be taken very seriously. The authors of the Scripture, and also when we are given a direct witness report. If the authors of Scripture were assembling the works, and then someone came and reported to them, and the author of the Scripture said, "I need to hear more about how Jesus multiplied the fish in the loaves." Who can tell me about that time Jesus multiplied the fish and multiplied the loaves for a crowd? And they have a story, they interview witnesses, and the witnesses say they were there that day, and they saw part of God revealed in Jesus' actions. Those witnesses, their word counts. It's important. They were there and they witnessed. You and I are coming along much later. We may have skepticism, we may have doubt, we may have questions. But these witnesses are important for us to hear and understand what's going on. Let's look at the Book of Acts. And Acts is a book that is all about witnesses and revelation in the early church, and what they were doing, and people witnessing, people seeing God revealed in different ways. Acts, chapter 10, verse 42 is the verse I'm gonna read. Acts 10, 42. "And He commanded us to preach to the people and to testify, that He is the one appointed by God to be judge of the living and the dead." So who commanded them to preach and who commanded them to testify? God. God revealed that to them and told them to go do it. So they're not taking credit. They're not saying, "We invented Jesus, we made this up, it's for our own benefit, we're doing this on our own." But rather, what they're saying is, God has been revealed in this way and given them the commandment, like not something they could optionally get out of or opt out of, but commanded them to preach, to witness, to testify of what they know. We're gonna look at one more verse in Acts, chapter 26, verse 16. So let's flip over. Acts 26, verse 16. So I'll give you just a moment to find it. Twenty-sixth chapter of Acts and the sixteenth verse. Paul is describing his conversion experience before Agrippa. And in verse 16, he says, yes, he's quoting, I believe he was quoting from Jesus, and he is. I'll read verse 15 also, because it makes, helps it make sense. "And I," Paul said, "who are you, Lord?" And the Lord said, "I am Jesus, whom you are persecuting." So we get clear demonstration of who is commanding Paul. "I am Jesus." "I am Jesus," the most famous name in history, "whom you are persecuting." Because that was the name that Paul was hunting down when his name was Saul, when he was a persecutor of Christians. Verse 16. "But rise and stand upon your feet, for I have appeared to you for this purpose, to appoint you as a servant and witness to the things in which you have seen Me and to those in which I will appear to you." "I have appeared to you for this purpose, to appoint you as a servant and witness." So Paul's witness is part of his anointing by God. He is a servant and he is a witness "to the things in which you have seen Me and to those in which I will appear to you." So Jesus has stepped into Paul's life, radically altered the trajectory of His mission, of His course, from persecuting early Christians to being one of their leaders and one of the great authors of the New Testament. And He has called him for this purpose. God reveals Himself for His own purpose, stepping in and doing this work in Paul's life. And this makes Paul an authoritative witness. He believed that he had received the direct Word from Jesus Himself, that Jesus was still alive, was no longer in the grave, no longer dead, that Jesus was alive, and that he had stepped into history, stepped into a specific day, a specific time, when the sun was at a specific point in the sky. One specific day in history, He appeared to Paul. And in that moment, when He appeared to Paul, He said, "I'm choosing you for this purpose." So that gives him His purpose, His calling, "to make you a witness and to make you a servant, that you may testify to others." This is exactly what Paul is doing. And by Acts 26, he is testifying to Agrippa. He is telling Agrippa what he knows and what has been revealed to him. So the idea of first-order witnesses, a first-order testimony, is very important in God's Word, that the people who are there, who have witnessed and have seen these things are of the most importance. Their, their word counts for a great deal. In Revelation, not the Book of Revelation, but in a general sort of way, when God reveals Himself, God speaks to humans. God speaks to humans. So we are spoken to by God in the Bible, this book that you and I hold. Or if you've got your phone, if you've got your phone Bible called up, God reveals Himself, God speaks to humans. This is how He speaks to us. In prayer, humans speak to God. So God speaks to us through the Bible, through Revelation, through His Word revealed to us. We speak back to Him in prayer. This creates dialogue between the created and the creator. So we are now in a dialogue with God. God is speaking to us in His Word. And that's why so many people, I think, are, people are troubled by the Bible. Some people are worried about it, some people dislike it, because it speaks to us. It's not just about what happened in history. Some people think it's a history book, and we're getting a specific view of history. It is that, but not only that. We don't read the Bible just to find out what happened to ancient people in an ancient time, in an ancient place. Why does that matter to us in 21st century, modern-day America? Why do we care about what happened to Moses, or Abraham, or David, or any of the others? Why do we care about this history? And the reason we care is because when we read the Scripture, God reveals Himself to us and speaks to us. I don't know if you can read a substantial amount of the Bible and not be touched by it, and not be a little bit changed by it. God is speaking to us, to humanity in general, and to us personally in His revealed Word. So if God speaks to us through it, we're going to be a little bit troubled. We're going to be a little bit worried. We're going to question some of our values and some of the things we think are important that aren't really that important. God is gonna speak to us, and He's gonna call to us by name. And He's gonna give us specific purpose. We've seen that in Acts 26. Jesus called Paul to a specific mission. And you may think that Paul was like the greatest missionary, the greatest person. He was given that purpose by Jesus. And when God speaks to us through the revelation, whether it's written down, the revealed Word, whether He reveals part of Himself to us through prayer, through events in our lives, through miracles on our behalf, when He reveals part of Himself to us, we ought to be a little bit troubled. We ought to be a little bit worried about what God is gonna use us for. God gives each of us a specific purpose. We're not all called by God to be missionaries, to be a servant and a witness in the way that Paul was. We live in a different time, in a different place. There are different ways for us to serve God. So God speaks to us through the Word and calls each one of us through His revelation. And that's troubling. We ought to be in fear and awe of this holy God who's calling us for this purpose, giving our life meaning and value. This is troubling to people, and it shouldn't surprise us. So we are, those of us who have seen the revelation or read the revelation, when God's revealed to us, a dialogue is created between the creative beings, that's us, we are the creatures, and the Creator, the one who made us. And there's a dialogue going there. Prayer is our way of speaking to God, and Revelation is God's way of speaking to us. And I don't mean to limit Revelation to what's in the Bible or God's Word. Revelation is, of course, any way that God chooses to reveal Himself. One last thing I want to comment on, to start this today, and we'll look at it more next week, but I mentioned very early on in this Bible study series that the greatest revelation of God is Jesus. Jesus Christ Himself is God's revealed Word, Word with a capital W. The Person of Jesus is the greatest revelation God has given to humanity. So I place Christ as more important even than the written Word, the Bible. I place Christ as of supreme value of all the revelations that we've been given. Jesus in His Person embodies revelation. He is a revelation of the God that sent Him. So in a general way, we can call Jesus the Revealer. He's the one who reveals God to us. And Jesus mentioned this at many different times, at many different ways, to His disciples and to the crowds that He spoke to. Christ Himself is God's revealed Word. All the other revelations make more sense through Him, and those other revelations are about Him. All the other revelations make more sense in the lens of Jesus, including the Bible, including the written Word, and the other revelations are all about Him. Since Jesus is fully God, He's not a lesser God, He's not a demi-God or a, you know, half of a God, He's fully God. So all the other revelations, including Scripture, including our personal experiences, our life stories, everything else that reveals part of God is really about Jesus. If it's about God, it's also about Jesus. So let's dive into some verses. Now, I've got several here, most are the New Testament. But first one we're gonna look at is the Old Testament. Haggai is a short little prophetic book. We're gonna find that here. Haggai. Haggai, chapter two, verse seven. Haggai two, seven. "And I will shake all nations, so that the treasures of all nations shall come in; and I will fill this house with glory, says the Lord of hosts." "I will shake all nations, so that the treasures of all nations shall come in; and I will fill this house with glory." This is an early verse that indicates what Jesus is going to do. God revealing Himself through Jesus shakes all nations. It's a hint at what is to come. Now we're gonna go to Matthew's Gospel. Really, just a few pages later, if you've got a print Bible. Matthew, chapter five, verse seven. At the beginning of the Sermon on the at the beginning of the Sermon on the Mount. Matthew five, seven. Blessed are the merciful, for they shall receive mercy. An early hint in some of Jesus' early teachings about the mercy that's going to be received. If we wanna talk about mercy, how can we not talk about Jesus, right? Jesus being the one who gives us mercy, who is supremely merciful, in spite of everything that was done to him, this mercy that comes to his people. Now we're gonna go to John's Gospel. John, chapter one, so just the, the beginning of John's Gospel. Now I'm gonna read one through fourteen, this is a lengthy passage, but there's so much theology and so much revelation, since that's kind of our key word, revelation from God in the first chapter of John's Gospel. John, chapter one, verses one through fourteen. In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. He was in the beginning with God. All things were made through him, and without him was not anything made that was made. In him was life, and the life was the life of men. The light shines in the darkness, and the darkness has not overcome it. There was a man sent from God, whose name was John. He came as a witness, to bear witness about the light that all might believe through him. He was not the light, but came to bear witness about the light. There's that word, witness, again. The true light, which enlightens everyone, was coming into the world. He was in the world, and the world was made through him; yet the world did not know him. He came to his own, and his own people did not receive him. But to all who did receive him, who believed in his name, he gave the right to become children of God, who were born not of blood, nor of the will of the flesh, nor of the will of man, but of God. And the word became flesh, and dwelt among us, and we have seen his glory, glory as of the only Son from the Father, full of grace and truth. So John is clearly telling us that Jesus is the revealed word of God. God speaks to us through Jesus. We're gonna look at Ephesians next, the book of Ephesians, chapter one. So when you find Ephesians, you wanna go to the first chapter. Ephesians, chapter one, verses three through ten. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us in Christ with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places, even as he chose us in him before the foundation of the world, that we should be holy and blameless before him. In love, he predestined us for adoption as sons through Jesus Christ, according to the purpose of his will, to the praise of his glorious grace, with which he has blessed us in the beloved. In him we have redemption through his blood, the forgiveness of our trespasses, according to the riches of his grace, which he lavished upon us in all wisdom and insight, making known to us the mystery of his will, according to his purpose, which he set forth in Christ as a plan for the fullness of time, to unite all things in him, things in heaven, and things on earth. So clearly, Jesus is central to God's plan of revelation, central to the plan of salvation, and completely inescapable. He is at the center. We're actually gonna turn backwards now to the book of First Corinthians. Backwards in the sense of, to the, towards the Old Testament. First Corinthians, chapter two, verse seven. First Corinthians two, seven. But we impart a secret and hidden wisdom of God, which God decreed before the ages for our glory. We impart a secret and hidden wisdom, well, it was secret and hidden. It's not revealed to all people, but it is Jesus, right? He is, he is the secret and hidden wisdom. He is the, the wisdom of God. In our last short passage, a few verses, also in First Corinthians, chapter thirteen, chapter thirteen, verses nine and ten. First Corinthians thirteen, nine and ten. For we know in part, and we prophesy in part; but when the perfect comes, the partial will pass away. So what God has revealed to us so far is great, it's wondrous, it's amazing, but it's not the full revelation yet. We don't understand or know everything about God. So what we know and understand comes through the prism of Jesus Christ. He is the lens through which we see God at work, the lens through which God has chosen to reveal himself. As we are still in the process of receiving revelation, God continues to reveal himself to us, and his process continues in his church, continues through Jesus, and there is more yet to be revealed. I hope that you've enjoyed our Bible study today, and I hope that you join us next week. I wanna close this in prayer, and give you a blessing as we, as we go on. Merciful God, reveal your truth to us, remind us of your sacred, holy word. Remind us of how Jesus sits at the center of all our beliefs, lest we forget, lest we go astray, lest we find something else we think is of greater value, or of equal value. Remind us how central Jesus is, and how you're still revealing yourself to your people through the church, by Jesus Christ, even today. Continue to reveal more and more wisdom and understanding to us more as we are able to grow in our faith. By your holy name, we pray for these things. Amen. Thank you.